And unmute it? Okay.
Welcome to the May 11, 2021 City Council meeting. We'll call for it. Here. We have broken down Hero.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here. I'm coming in from here as a participant.
Here. Councilmember Lando.
Yes.
And let's tell them that Ashley gave her address where she's. Right. Okay, it takes us to approve the agenda, the revised agenda.
I'll move for approval of the revised agenda.
Support. Discussion, discussion. We have an agenda. Special presentations, gun awareness. First Friday in June. There is every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who shot and wounded. On the average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die from a gun homicide than people in higher, than higher income counties. And whereas Michigan is, has 1,212 gun deaths at a rate of 12.1 deaths per 100,000 people. Michigan has 31st highest rate of gun deaths in the US. And whereas homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities and more than half are all firearm related gun deaths in nation, in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation including Hazel Park are working to end the senseless violence with evidence based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety and communities that serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law abiding citizens go hand in hand with keeping guns away from the people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know, know their communities best and are most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it. And are best positioned to understand, know, and keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence. After more than a year of increased gun sales, increased, increased calls to suicide, domestic violence outlines, the increase in city gun violence. In January, whereas in January 2013, Pendleton was physically shot and killed at the age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, it recognized 34th birthday of Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997. People across the United States recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And wear, and wear orange in tribute to it. Katie Pendleton and other victims of violence is the love of orange and of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Katie's, Katie's family, who asked their classmates and to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters, where out in the woods, and orange is the color to symbolize the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join the campaign of pledging to wear orange on June 4th, and the first Friday in June 2021, to help raise awareness of gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness of gun violence and honor their lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to help keep firearms out of the wrong hands. They encourage responsible gun ownership and keep their children safe. Now therefore be resolved, I make Mayor Michael Webb, the city Hazel Park declares the first Friday of June, on June 4th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support the local community's efforts and prevent traumatic effects of gun violence and honor the value of human life.
Thank you.
It takes to the next presentation. Would you like to read it?
I will read it. Unless Ms. Sullivan would like to read it, but if she would not continue reading, I would happy to read it. A proclamation to confirm May 15 through June 15, 2021, as to that syndrome awareness month in Hazel Park. Whereas an estimated 301,000 children ages 6 to 17 in the United States are diagnosed with Tourette's Syndrome. And whereas Tourette's Syndrome is defined as a group of childhood onset neurodevelopmental conditions known collectively as tic disorder, which can be found evident in early childhood or adolescence. And whereas these tics are involuntary, have the sudden movements or vocalization that could repeat itself and may change in nature, frequency, and severity without full warning. And whereas individuals with Tourette's Syndrome frequently have co-occurring conditions that cause their diagnosis and cause more impairment than it takes itself, including attention deficit disorder, thinking deficit disorder, autism disorder, also disorder, food disorders, learning dysphoria, and learning disability, executive function disorder, and sensory processing disorder. And whereas Tourette's Syndrome has historically been misinterpreted and considered to be a condition of emotional disarray instead of the condition of clinical biology. And whereas children with Tourette's Syndrome are often the manifestations of disability by educators who fail to understand that the child is unable to control their tic and that the child may be delayed in maturity and vision. And whereas despite the fact that individuals with Tourette's Syndrome who face discrimination without doing with this particular disorder, they are intelligent and capable of great contributions to society when given the proper supports. And whereas treating this disorder will help guarantee equal for acceptance and a better future for individuals with Tourette's Syndrome. Now therefore be resolved, the city Hazel Park will proclaim May 15 as Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Month. Now just in need of individuals with neurological impairment, there is all residents that support Tourette's Syndrome awareness and education. Remember to assist both individuals and families to deal with this neurobiological disorder. Mr. Mayor, membership council, administration respectfully request motion for approval.
Support. Okay, we welcome to City Council, welcome up to City Council. Anyone for the audience? Bring your thing up. Steve Charlie is on the screen, his hand up.
Hi, council and mayor and everyone, I'm Charlie Cavell, our county commissioner. First, congratulations on the gun safety awareness, that's a big deal. Second, I want to just give a quick COVID overview and then talk about now that we have the APR, which is the COVID 2.0 relief money coming in this week for Oakland County. And hopefully here in Hazel Park, you guys should be getting your checks soon too. There have been some guidelines from the treasury, so I just want to give some highlights there. So first, thinking about COVID, the state of Michigan has now reached a point where 55% of us have been vaccinated. So for the next six weeks, we should be able to open from, we should have 55% of our residents vaccinated. And then in two weeks, be able to have another 400,000 residents vaccinated to get us to 60%, then 65%, then reach that magical number of 70. There should be few, if zero bottlenecks from the supply side, so there should be enough vaccine for people to get it if they want to. So speaking to that, if anyone has any questions, I would love to answer any questions anyone has. Feel free to call me at 248-807-4347, email me cavellc@oakgov.com. I'd be more than happy to put you in touch with anyone from the public health department to talk about anything you might have questions about related to the vaccine. So there's that about the vaccine. And if everything holds firm and the trends continue as they are going, we should be in a really good place in six weeks. Talking about ARP, so like I mentioned, we're going to be getting our checks to our respective units of government. So Oakland County is going to get about $120 million this week. And now that we've gotten rules from the Department of Treasury down in DC, it's a 151 page document. A lot of people in the government, including myself, have been combing through it to figure out what we can and can't use it on. So we're starting talks in earnest about childcare, about government innovation, talking about infrastructure, things that we can see, things that we can't see, talking about access, think about how there can be a dividend for us in our communities so that this has a magnified impact over time. Again, would love to talk to anyone about that now that we especially have some clarity on what we can do with all this money. Again, call, email, text. And those were the two big things I wanted to bring up. And yeah.
Charlie, thank you, Charlie. Anyone else wish to speak some announcements?
Mr. Mayor, we are planning to have a park cleanup this Saturday. And also we are planning on getting our Boulevard Association with their Eight Mile up as well. So there are opportunity, volunteer opportunities for Hazel Park residents and people who love Hazel Park that wants to volunteer, make our community a better place. If you want to clean parks, show up at the Hazel Park Recreation Department between 9:00 and 10:00 on Saturday morning. Bring in gloves, rags, or enough equipment that you have and sign up for the park. Also, if you're interested in helping to clean up on Eight Mile, I think they're meeting in Councilmember Sullivan, you can correct me, I think they're at Dad Butler Park at the blender and Eight Mile to clean up Eight Mile as well. And we will have some personnel there from the city of Hazel Park as well, make sure that outside of Eight Mile.
Just to note, it's actually at the Eight Mile Boulevard Association headquarters, which is right by Dad Butler Park. But it is 20500 Conant Street for the Eight Mile portion. Thanks.
This Thursday, there will be a vaccine clinic at the rec center. It's also a health screening, there are also HIV testing and pressure screening. And that is in partnership with Port Town Healthcare. They will be having that the 13th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM at the Hazel Park Recreation Center. And it is a walk-in, no appointment.
Thank you, councilman, for your efforts in organizing this vaccination point. You can walk in, this is our opportunity to take advantage of vaccinations. The city of Hazel Park, we worked very hard to create those opportunities. Initially, people chasing vaccines, now we have vaccines to potential people who need to get vaccinated. So please consider getting a vaccine. Free, no cost, all you have to do is show up, get your vaccine, and then show up again. You reach later to get the second dose, I believe it's in the dino vaccine. So again, strongly encourage anybody who's not had an opportunity to get vaccinated, that to please take advantage of this opportunity. So the council will fall very hard to bring this point here and create this opportunity for
Councilmember Oliver, rather than the requirement for that walk-in. There is an app, so if anybody needs a vaccine.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements? The minute moves us to public discussion, any public discussion for the audience? Public discussion, anyone want to come up for the audience? Okay, I'll keep it zooming. Public discussion from Zoom? Wouldn't speak, with your name and address?
Hi, my name is Diana Darland, and I'm a member of Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. And I, all I wanted to do tonight is just thank you for making the proclamation to recognize June 4th as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We, we really appreciate the support. In doing so, you have honored the more than 100 Americans who die every day by gun violence. Some of the other startling statistics were included in the proclamation that you read so nicely, so I won't repeat it. But I just would like to add that by proclaiming June 4th National Gun Violence Awareness Day, or Wear Orange Day, you have joined hundreds of cities across the country and more than 27 cities here in Oakland County alone. So I want you to know that you're in good company and we really appreciate it. So thank you so much for agreeing to make the proclamation. Mayor Webb, I spoke to city manager Ed Clopisher. I don't know if you're there this evening, but again, I just want to express my appreciation on behalf of Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion from Zoom? No one, both parties session.
My name is Rochelle Boney, I'm a Hazel Park resident. And I also relate to being for passing the reservation for Tourette's Syndrome awareness. Michigan actually doesn't have a lot of resources available to the residents here who have Tourette. And I was born in Michigan and I've lived a lot of other places, but when I came back as an adult, needed assistance with Tourette. There wasn't much. And so I started volunteering for the Heart Association of America and started my own local organization here in Michigan called Michigan Tourette Connect. That provides resources and support for Michigan residents affected by it. And so I just wanted to say thank you because this really does help raise more awareness and spread the word that there, that people alone, that this is something common enough to where people are bringing me up to city council and trying to get things enacted to help our community. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. And your, take us your address for the record.
Oh, 559, who address?
Please.
559 West overhead Heights Boulevard.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public discussion? All right, and close public discussion, I thank everybody for your comments. And what we can here is to promote awareness of every topic that is important to the masses in our community. That awareness is a one across the country. And Tourette's Syndrome is new on our radar, and I think we talked about it in the past, but this time we're really focusing. Because we also, we all know children, relatives that have tics and symptoms that seem to be different. That are either, either they learn well or they don't, they need the support. Okay, it takes us to the consent agenda, 1 through 8, council? Among the approval, Mr. Mayor, consent agenda items 1 through 8.
Second.
Any discussion, discussion? Motion passes. The administration, on the board there, is there approval of business license 23203, younger, one-off solutions LLC? Anyone here from there? Would you like to give a little commercial about your business?
Sure.
Right up there. Welcome to Hazel Park.
Hi, thank you, my name is Ryan Posit, I'm a professional engineer, I work in Madison Heights. We make truck equipment, you may be familiar with Fisher and Western brand snowplows. So I've got a decade of experience in product development, looking to branch out, and this is kind of a side venture for me initially. Bringing my skills and experience to the community, looking to team up with individuals with ideas, something they're looking to bring to market, as well as small businesses that are small to medium manufacturers that are looking to flex their engineering resources. Something that, you know, a lot of the small companies right now are in position to bring on new staff, if you have new projects coming along.
Well, you basically team up with a entrepreneur or person with ideas to help them focus their product on streamline engineering or maybe more talented folks produce.
Sure, you've probably heard of a company, 1800 Event Help. So it's similar to that, where I'll work with somebody who's got Trump in that they want to flesh out. I have experience with market research, I have experience with product design and development. And so I help them, you know, get something to the point where they'd be ready to go and look for investment. Or depending on resources and if a project is different, I may be willing to partner with them and bring something to the market. With the building, I've got space and I plan to bring light manufacturers, prototyping, and some research and development into the building. For Hazel Park, be able to build prototypes and light manufacturing, initial production runs.
Okay. Welcome to see.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. It takes us to, thanks to the ministry reports licensing consideration, Mr. Cavell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess you have attached various applications for, they're around medical and recreational processing and grow applications, and especially the stuff through the product approval of those applications.
Council will be a pleasure. Um, anything? Move it, I'm just gonna move it. Number.
Do we have to do them all at once?
No, you can do them all at once, just in the resolution, oh, and they have to attach applications to the board.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption approval of each application, I'll be right.
Support. Discussion. Any comments? Questions? Session? Anyone?
I'd just like to make a comment and let this be that, know how much I appreciate their time, effort, patience, and due diligence in scoring these applications, bringing them to our attention.
Councilmember Lando, thank you for that. And I have to, with special recognition to Jeffrey Campbell, who's done an outstanding job managing this whole process. This is more of a full-time position in and of itself, and he is simply extraordinary.
First off, yeah, and I just want to correct something for the record, you're not necessarily scored. These are reports, but I appreciate it. And then I couldn't do it without Amanda, who helps a great deal on this, it's a team effort and I couldn't do it without. Thank you for the time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. No discussion? Through the approval, ordinance establishing reapplication in second.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval of this. On second.
I'll move that we approve the ordinance establishing a reapplication commission on the second reading. The board.
Question?
For clarification purposes, I just want mayor and council to know that, or to clarify and make sure that we understand here, that this will now have to ask the reapplication committee for the city of Hazel Park, and that any previous actions by previous council can transition that response to a different organization, I'm not loving for that. Right?
Right.
Okay. Nourishing to that, I want to make sure the minutes reflect that as.
Okay, it takes us to the boards and permissions request for funding and reappointments.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests that the elected officials compensation commission be reappointed and appointed with the following individuals. Peggy Burleson, who's proud to join Peter, and the appointment of
So. Discussion, discussion. Passes.
The administration respectfully request the appointment of Tom Jones to the general.
I don't know.
Support.
Session, one, session one.
Recreation board, he's on this one too. I don't know what we're gonna do with this cat. The administration respectfully request the appointment of Tina Cutout and Tom Jones Recreation Board. They won't move really well.
So moved. Support. Session.
Now the last ones here, I don't know that we've contacted this group yet. Formerly requested their interest in this. We do have to get this established, Charles.
Let them have a name.
They declined will appoint someone else.
Let them have the name of Charles Winward III.
There you go.
So we have five names, Abby Young, Sullivan, Dick, maybe a Washington, Tim, Louis, Winward. Does that mean five hundred part?
I think it's a minimum of five, I don't think there's a specific number. I think that's flexible, I think council was thinking between five and nine.
Third. So I'm looking to appoint the environmental sustainability committee, Tim Young, Valavanna, Dick, Andrew Washington, and Louis, Charles Winward. Session? Question? Passes new business, any new business, anyone have new business they want to bring up? Size the crappy construction that we have to deal with, let them down the service guys. But that's all business and new business. Yeah, hopefully we can get that done before the year and the whole city will be better off. And we all get tired of it, but beware COVID-19 again, council members will fall to the great service here, getting us set up at rec center. Need a shot, go over and get it, and be testing, go over there and communications for the department heads, the department heads wishing to speak. David, I'm glad you're here. City attorney, was it Swartz, you had a big weekend?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just give a huge heart, thank you to all of the administration, Mr. Cavell, sure, all of the city council. Where everyone, everyone here, to be able to express the gratitude of the turnout and the support. We raised, our goal was about 7,500, we have exceeded, I believe, $10,000. Within a three hour period, we raised well over $3,000, almost $4,000 in a yellow window. The vendors that were there were just raving about what a wonderful event. Everyone that was there was just raving about what a wonderful. Everyone that was there was just raving about what a wonderful, wonderful event. I wanted to thank Chief Story and Chief Hooko, Tom Jones and Tim Young and just everyone. There's not any words in the dictionary that can express the things that made this event possible through the help of all of you. So to all of you listening, thank you. Now, everyone's looking forward to May next year's second annual event. Dr. Kupi, thank you. It's just everyone.
Can you remind everybody what the event was?
I'm so sorry. We had our first annual for Bruce dot org pancreatic cancer walkathon. And we raised almost about ten thousand dollars for Purple Stride 2021, which is Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. And these funds are collectively, I do believe the teams across have raised about over two hundred thousand dollars towards the twenty-five million dollar initiative for early detection and testing that they're trying to develop. So it was an amazing day and it was the just amazing. So grateful. So thank you very, very much to everyone. And it was really fun too. And I really appreciate that. So next year, May, everyone's already, we're coming together for the second annual in May. So keep in mind that pancreatic cancer is not just once a year. It's all the time. You need to raise awareness and funds. So please remember that funds are needed to help define treatments and cure detection for disease. So.
The occasion's for a civic mentor.
Yes, I'm I like a little bit of Melissa said, I'm very grateful. The turnout that she had for this fundraiser. It was the whole, the whole thing was so very sad, you know, with your husband. And as a city and a community, you all kind of went through it. And I think that this event gave us a chance, all of us, to take back the role of the control that we lost in that whole process. We lost in and begin really to make this a cause. That we can seek to embrace among the whole of the kinds of verbal disease because it really is really is becoming far more prevalent. And there's not a lot of good options, obviously, for someone who's had it. But if we can raise more awareness of that, that'll be a great one. So thank you to everybody who participated. Great participation, mayor, council, the employee, school district, and general guidance community. So this is the first year in hope for the next. And with that, I just want to remind everybody that Michigan's system of fiscal finance is fundamentally broken. And so is our, when I talk about that, I also mean our tax system. And occasionally I will see things on social media about the tax system and it's a people's perception of it is sometimes. So we're going to try to do, try to do a little bit of this during the budget session. We're going to continue to try to do a campaign of education so we can explain just how broken this thing is. Whether it's an interaction between headwind and Prop A, which needs to be there. We know them saying throw away the caps or anything like that. We're saying you can make some common sense, sensible tweaks that will allow these not-for-revenue survive. We're saying fully fund revenue sharing, keep the promise of the communities of Michigan. Broke and broke repeatedly from the nineteen ninety's, two thousands and the progress of literally billions of dollars. So we continue to provide you some more information about that. Again, my office is always here to assist you. You can reach my office online at the city manager's binder issue form and you always respond to those and you can call me at two eight five four six four zero two zero. Anytime you have an issue or problems or just want to talk about city officials' part. Thank you. Have a good night.
If we apparently had someone on Zoom that did not have that, maybe they're handy or public discussion. If you're wishing to speak, apparently you've got water bills.
Yes, that's me. Thank you. I am calling in today. I just learned that next week. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, so you name an address for the record.
My name is Jennifer. I'm a resident of East Lansing, Michigan. My address is five four five five Wild Oak Drive. And I'm calling partly just as a human citizen, but also representing the People's Water Board Coalition that is concerned about water shut offs all around the state of Michigan. Today I learned about that Hazel Park is intending to restart water shut offs next week. There had been a statewide moratorium over the last year that the governor instated because of COVID. So it stopped the state from shutting off water for the last year. That has just ended. But however, there are still people suffering from COVID and people who haven't been immunized. The risk is still very great. I'm just really concerned that up to four hundred households in Hazel Park next week could have their water shut off. And I'm hoping that city council is really paying close attention to this issue and what it means for you as elected people as neighbors to people who are living close to people with water shut offs. Even before the COVID-19 hit, the city of Detroit was shutting off mass numbers. And research was done here that showed how how it was really causing disease and impacting health, even for people whose water wasn't shut off. And one of the first things I think about is gas stations and gas tanks and go to, you know, service your vehicle when you're also servicing your vehicle with people whose water has been shut off. And so it's just something that I hope you're paying attention to. Water is life for real. People with children need it. People who are taking medication need it. Elderly people need to have water in their homes. Often the elderly and people with children are the people who are living in the most poverty in our cities these days. And so I just hope that, that the people who attended this meeting and the city council are paying close attention to this and looking at what else could be done. I don't know enough details, but I could put people in contact with people who do that there is COVID-19 relief federal funding coming in to cities and counties that can help to keep people's water on during this time. So we're also kind of in a, in a phase where we just need to figure out a temporary solution. But we're also beginning to have to find long-term solutions so that people can have water in their homes. I'm proud of the city of Detroit, who hasn't always done things right. But the mayor has decided to at least extend the water shut off moratorium in Detroit for another year. In East Lansing, where I live, one in nine households is at jeopardy to having their water shut off. And they're trying to figure out what to do. And I'm not following as closely as I should, but I think that city council is also deciding to continue a moratorium in East Lansing. It's, it's an address, addition, an issue that has been long-term addressing people living in poverty. But through COVID, many of us who weren't living in poverty before are facing other financial issues. And water is expensive. Thank you for listening to me, especially as a, a non-Hazel Park resident. I have fond memories of Hazel Park. I did attend an alternative high school program there like thirty years ago. So it's, it's good to be back with you folk. Thank you.
Yes, just to remind everybody, this Thursday, May thirteenth, at the rec center from three to eight PM is the vaccine clinic. I believe that's six two zero Woodward Heights. And they will also be doing other health screens, HIV testing. Three to eight. There is no residency requirement, so please go and get vaccinated.
Councilperson, listen.
I'm here. I, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight, both virtually and in person. Ms. Teed, I believe is your last name. Thank you for phoning in from the other side of the state. And our water bills are definitely a concern. It is something that I have spoken with previously. Pardon me, I have a bulldog accompanying me to this meeting. The, the water bills and our shut offs are definitely a discussion that I've had multiple times with Tim Young, our water supervisor and our city management. I've been reassured that we have programs in place to assist and that we do have an, an average number of these notifications that go out, that this is not an exorbitant number of notifications. This is almost on average. But it is something that I'm definitely concerned about. And I do agree with you that water is life and it is life-saving and it is, it's something that everybody has the right to. So it's something that we're going to continue talking about and continue working on. We do have a list of Waterville Assistant Agencies and some funding for those. And I'm going to make sure those get shared on our city website as well as my personal Facebook page. And our city water department is really great to work with as well if you reach out to them. The phone number is while I look that up, I'm also going to thank pardon me, I'm also going to thank Ms. Darland for attending. Thank you so much for coming. I wore my orange today in support of gun violence safety. And as a gun owner myself, I do agree that gun violence and gun safety is, is a very important issue. And I don't know anybody who hasn't experienced or knows somebody that has been affected by gun violence. And that is a terrible thing to think about. I also want to thank Ms. Bono for reaching out about her threat awareness month resolution that we applied today. She has provided us with some information and she will be bringing some additional information to our police department and our fire chief on some training and some resources that our departments, our first responders can receive for free through her organization and through the National Threats Organization. I also want to remind people that the art fair, the applications for the Hazel Park Art Fair for 2021 are now open. You can go to HPartfair.org and fill out your application online there. I want to remind people that this Saturday is the fifteenth and we are having our citywide and Eight Mile Road cleanup. Nine to ten AM is when you register either at that address, the twenty-five hundred content on Eight Mile. If you're looking to volunteer to clean up Eight Mile or six twenty West Woodward Heights. If you're looking to volunteer at a city park, you can call and register two four eight five four seven five five three five. When you go and then sign in those days from nine to ten AM, you're going to get equipment directions. You're going to get probably signed up with a supervisor or somebody to kind of show you the ropes. And then our DPW department is going to come around and collect those leaf bags and those refuse bags after the cleanup that day. So I'm really grateful for MBA, Eight Mile MBA for partnering with me to organize this for the city. I think it's a nice, safe activity that we can do outdoors. It benefits the community. It benefits your neighbors. And I want to congratulate Melissa on her amazingly successful event this weekend I attended. I walked the track with everybody else and it was really great seeing people come together for Melissa and for the organization. Her organization is forbruce.org and it is a pancreatic cancer action network. And they host walks and education to fund research for pancreatic cancer and and the families and survivors of those people that have passed from it. So thank you for letting us participate in that, Melissa. And thanks for bringing that to our community. I want to remind everybody, I got vaccinated. Yay. Get vaccinated. Our lovely co-council McFall has organized a free clinic walk-in, no appointments needed. I am a terrible needle phobic. If I can do it, you can do it. Please do it. For those of us who can't, who are immune compromised and can't get vaccinated. Please do that for your neighbors. Do that for your family members. Help keep everybody safe. Keep wearing your masks, keep washing your hands, stay safe.
Well, Hazel Park, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to comment and say, Commissioner McFall for organizing. Especially the forty-third District Court is in the middle of a ticket amnesty. So if you have already taken time until one fraction, now is your opportunity to get the extra piece of wave. There is a new resource on the city page to share resident issues. I love pestering at Colbisher and now you have the ability to do that yourself as well. So please visit the city website. File that and you will get a response from the city staff. I'd like to let the rest of council know that I will not be attending the next meeting. I'm asked to be used for the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting. And lastly, Rochelle, I'd like to say thank you for your honesty, your vulnerability and for reaching out. I know all of us have causes that are assuming for us, but it's even more impactful for when residents reach out. And because it's important to you, it's important to me. So I just want to say thank you for addressing that.
You know, we really echo most everybody's sentiments. I'm sure as we've got gun violence and direct syndrome, many of us have someone who impacted by pancreatic cancer. So thank you for that opportunity of participating. And I also want to remind again, lots of you out there on the weekend, the park came up. And there's also the Hazel Park Cannibal Bike Club. It's Wednesday. Seven PM, High School, weather permitting. And I wanted to welcome somewhere really neat business, one-off solutions LLC. That sounds like deep-bearer business and ideas. No idea what they're coming to the park. Appreciate that. I want to thank everybody online on Zoom for participating. These resolutions, they mean a lot to us. They raise our awareness, but they help us to move the needle of the awareness with everybody. Send this resolution down to other cities and what the officials have been doing with that. Appreciate people bringing these to our room. And lastly, if you love somebody, tell them if you have children, hug them every day and hug them. Thanks for coming down to the conference. Thank you, sir. I'd also like to resonate all the fine comments. We can't say enough about our illness out there that we can all have our favorite, all the pediatric cancer, mortals that really touched every family in this world. And, you know, we all have threats, you know, there's another issue. We all have family members or friends of family where someone suffered from that and didn't get the help they needed. And there's some that, you know, some parents were responsible to find them. And it's not easy to find help for all these illnesses or people that all may have cursed in life. And I like to say, you know, our community is moving forward. It's making changes. We have another twenty-some houses underground being built. We have condos being built. We have a vibrant downtown, busy bustling. And we have a new business here on South John Arden, just over freeway. A couple of doors out from Bee. And there's another business across the street from them, a airborne adboarder company, a typical original tire store. That's coming in as well. We have other new businesses, different, different cultures of business. Different types of business that's going to push, I think, push these apart to the limits. And that's what we're all striving to do. Make it better, work better, play better, be aware and look for the future and hold it in your hand. There's only there for a little while until you have to change your game and make it a better future, hopefully. And that's, that's the beach of the day. Make it better, look to the future. Live for, live for today, work for tomorrow.
Beacon of the Future on Morgan the Rock. Shout out to Exetera Hazel Park Company that is over cleaning up Genovale. This is who we are in Hazel Park. Hey, I'm glad that the state and federal government think that it's important for everybody to get two years out of Hazel Park. We've been doing that in Hazel Park for five years. So you know what? We're leading the way here. I'm glad they think that green economy is important. We've got two of the Midwest's most important electric battery manufacturers located here in Hazel Park. So it's an exciting time in Hazel Park. Welcome to one-off. I think you'll fit nicely with the urging pool of economy that we've grown here in City of
We've got a lot of new technology businesses coming through. I think the whole new technology area is up there, even with the batteries and other companies that's coming in. As we're exploring, right? We have several different companies that are worldwide involved in them. For that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and listening to us and staying in the meat. What should we do here, please? Support.
I just wanted to get that water department phone number out real quick. It's two four eight five four six three three seven nine. I didn't want to interrupt anybody. I said enough earlier. Thanks, everyone.